Hello.
Hi, John.
Hello, Judith.
My goodness, we're actually getting to see your face, Connor. Now, if we ever get to see Brian's, we'll be really ahead of the game.
Stuart.
Hi, Stuart.
Hello, Stuart.
You're muted.
Muted. Peter's muted.
Peter's using Angela's computer, huh?
Is that better?
Now we hear you.
Definitely.
Okay.
How are you, Stuart?
Uh, I'm okay. Other than, uh, duking it out with, I'm trying to be Muhammad Ali here.
Oh, no.
Had a little operation, and so I'm in a cast. It's coming up next week.
Well, happy healing, hopefully.
Met's call. I'm not available this weekend.
Okay, thanks for the note. I'm noting it down.
Uh, hi, Melissa. For some reason, I got a big screen of everybody. Does everybody else have the same view?
What view?
I'm getting the full screen of each one of you instead of all the little.
You have to click on the little view thing in the upper right-hand corner and choose gallery.
If you wave the mouse up there, it'll say view.
Okay, got it. Okay. Well, let's see. We got Connor, we got Stuart, we got John, and we got Judy. So we have a core.
Yep.
Okay, it is six o'clock, and if my first rule here, I would like to call to order the regular workshop meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for September 29th, 2022. Are there any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
There are not.
Okay, we have the minutes from September 15th to approve. If everybody's good with them, I, we accept them as is.
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so, under Communications and Announcements, we have a letter from the Woodstock Fire Department regarding Fam Akers. We have an email from D. Duan regarding the Housing Smart Communities. Verizon Wireless Site Compliance Report from L. Freeman. Resolution 180-2022 is to adopt the CEA from the Town Board received September 27th.
Yay.
Yay. We have a letter from A. Mitchell regarding 5G. We have an email from G. Murphy regarding Complete Streets Workshop. And we have comments from Matthew Rudikoff regarding Fam Akers, which we will get to later. So what we have tonight is we have a public hearing, which will be for the Crown Castle. And then we have, go back to our workshop. And we have Fam Akers. We're gonna be talking with John Lyons to discuss some concerns there. And then after that, we're gonna have a quick discussion on general standards. Part two, community character, the definition and how to apply to planning board applications. And then after that, we have an Affordable Housing, HOF, and follow-up and discussion. And then there's the map of the Water Aquifer Protection and Revision Law. And then unfinished business. So, a couple of minutes early, because we have to open this public hearing on time.
Peter, you're just too efficient for me and my scheduling.
All right, well, I will read the intro. The public hearing is scheduled for 6:05. The public hearing will be the Network Building and Consulting, OBO Crown Castle, and Cell Company or Cell Co. Partnership, quote Verizon Wireless, unquote. Eligible Facilities Request, Special Use Permit 22-0322H, and SUP number 22-0361H. This is a public hearing for site plan review and special use permit applications for modifications to existing site plan to remove six coaxial cables, install three antennas, and new mount as per mount modifications analysis with no change to structure height or ground space in the RA zoning district located at 122 California Quarry Road in Woodstock. And is represented by Lamar Freeman, Senior Site Acquisition Specialist. So for this public hearing, I'm going to turn it over to our co-chair, Stuart Lipkin. And I will let him go ahead and open the public hearing. All right, so this is Stuart Lipkin here. I'm gonna thank you, Peter. I'm gonna wait until 6:05. My clock still says 6:04, so is Lamar Freeman on the line?
I don't see Lamar, but we have a, we have a team. Donovan Piper, Ashley Greenspan, Wasif Sharif, and Cameron and Krista are all his colleagues that have been tagged in.
Yeah, I'm Donovan Piper. I'm with Crown Castle, and I'll be representing us along with some others here on our call tonight. Appreciate you guys having us and taking your time to visit with us.
And Donovan, just wave your hand so I can see which person is speaking. Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the public hearing is open. So, sir, Donovan, I'm gonna ask you to tell me your connection to the applicant and then brief statement as to relief that the applicant is seeking.
For sure. Um, yeah, so I work for Crown Castle, and we're applying on behalf of Verizon for their application. And I believe what we're here for tonight is the consideration of an eligible facilities request. The town is to determine whether the application meets the six criteria to qualify as an eligible facilities request. Those six criteria relate to the physical dimensions and proposed work of Verizon's application. And we deem that they meet all six of those criteria. And so we're invited here to discuss, and we're here for you guys.
All right, I see that Lamar Freeman has joined us. You hear me, Mr. Freeman?
Yes, I hear you. Yes, I hear you.
Mr. Freeman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Welcome. Okay, okay. Thanks for coming back. So could you just explain for everybody that's on the call here what the proposed changes are to the tower that the applicant seeks to have approved?
Um, Verizon's looking to swap out three antennas, one per sector at this particular location. That's generally the the modification being done for the upgrade for Verizon.
Okay, and the last time you were before us, you indicated that these modifications were to enable provision of 5G service. Do you recall saying that?
Yes.
Okay. So at this point, I'd like to invite any members of the public that have any comments or questions regarding this application. If you raise your hand, we'll recognize you one at a time, so you can speak. So are there any members of the public present at which to speak or make a comment or ask a question?
I see, I see two participants raised their hands, so first.
Do you see any reaction from anybody?
First, I saw Linda and Terry Lover, so we'll take them first.
I'm sorry?
Linda and Terry Lover. I don't know why you said that.
Hi. I just have two quick questions on number one.
Hold on. I moved to a different room. Would you all mind just waiting two minutes?
No.
Did you?
Move to a different room. You keep freezing. We'll say Linda and Terry's up number one, and Rex is up number two. Okay, guys? Thank you.
I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I had to move to a different room because I'm having trouble with my Wi-Fi up in my office room there, so bear with me. So, Melissa, do we have members of the public that wish to make the comment or be heard?
We do. We're gonna, we're gonna start with Linda, and she's aware, and then we're gonna move on to Rex. So that's the first two for now. So Linda, have at it.
Okay, Lynn, you can tell us your full name, please?
Yes, it's Linda Lover.
Okay, what would you like to say or ask?
Well, I live on Glasgow Turnpike, probably close to the tower. I know it's on, up there on California Quarry Road. So my question is, number one, is there like a drawing or a picture of what this tower looks like? Like what it looks like now and what it's gonna look like after you guys put all your different things on it? And number two, I'm just concerned, and I'm not sure how true this is, because you hear a lot of rumors and things. I'm concerned about supposedly these little boxes that are gonna go, eventually go on telephone poles near our house, whether that's true or not. I would like to know a little bit more about that. So, you know, like I said, the first thing is, is there a drawing to show what it looks like now or a picture? And then what is gonna look like after you're done putting, changing out your equipment? And also about the boxes that purportedly are gonna be on these telephone poles eventually near our houses. Thank you.
Thank you for that, those questions and comments to the board. I'm gonna ask Mr. Freeman if you would like to respond to that comment or anyone from your team.
I could share my screen to show you the photosims of the, of the tower and what it looks like before and after. It was very minimal change. Give me one second.
Thank you.
And I just want to mention that when they submitted their application, this was included in it also, just so you know.
Let me see my screen.
Yes. So if you could describe for us, Mr. Freeman, what you're showing us and how it responds to the question?
So on the left is what the tower currently looks like. As you can see, on the right, there's literally an antenna change swap. As you can see on the left, that there's a different size of an antenna. We're in the green space in the, in the middle here. So literally, again, as I stated, there's really minimal change of what the tower will look like after the installation.
And again, this is Stuart Lipkin. So the photo on the left is actual, and the photo on the right is a simulation?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and I believe that the, Linda also had a question about the small devices. Linda, can you repeat your concern about that or your question so that Lamar Freeman can respond to that as well?
So, um, you know, I've, I've heard different things about this type of stuff, and my big concern is down the line of possibly having these boxes installed near our houses on telephone poles, if that's a true thing or not. But I, that's, that's my big concern, because I am in the village, and I, I think we have a lot of wires and different things around, and I'm just concerned that, I know, for me, I wouldn't want one of those boxes near my house if that's what's gonna end up happening eventually.
Well, unfortunately, that's not what we're here for this evening. I can't really speak on that. So this is a completely different installation that Verizon is doing. Again, we're focused on this monopine at this particular location, so unfortunately, I cannot really speak on anything in the future.
So you're not saying that that would never happen, or it might be a possibility, you know?
It, it's no part of this project. This project is just, as Lamar was saying, is to, to swap out one antenna per sector and replace it with a new antenna. So for this project, there is no additional plans or anything on top of that.
Donovan, that's your name, right, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, forgive me, because I'm a little slow with names sometimes, but
That's quite all right.
Can you tell me whether the applicant is contemplating moving ahead with these smaller pieces of equipment on telephone poles as, as was asked about by the, by Linda? I know it's not presently before us, but is it part of the 5G installation that might, that is being contemplated down the line?
I, I don't know about down the line. I know as of right now, no, there, there's no talk of that. As part of this project is just what we're talking about. What I think Linda's talking about is, is a technology that is often referred to as small cell technology, and those are, are different projects that are used across the country in different areas where they need, you know, maybe additional bandwidth or needs, but is this project is, is just this one project we're talking about on the, the one tower there.
So i- is it the applicant's contemplation to provide 5G service in the town of Woodstock without small cells?
Um, well, Wasif, could you answer that maybe?
That is correct, actually. And if I can add something here, actually, if we are talking about a small sense. So small cells are usually needed in urban, dense urban areas where we deploy our whole spectrum on our existing towers, and we still need more capacity. Then we use that option. In this case, actually, we are trying to deploy more of the spectrum on our existing site. So I do not anticipate any small cell in future.
And, and sir, can you tell, I, I don't, are, are you on camera or just on phone? Because I don't see you. I'd like to you to tell us your full name and what your position is and qualifications.
Okay. My name is Wasif Sharif. My camera is on. I'm not sure if you can see me. My name is Wasif Sharif, and I am from Verizon Wireless RF Department.
Which department, sir?
Radio frequency.
Okay, and our, what, and what is your background? Are you an engineer?
Yes, I am an engineer. I have my experience in radio frequency engineering, 15 to 16 years.
Okay, did I understand you correctly to say that you don't believe that Verizon is going to be deploying small cells in order to provide the 5G service in the town?
So definitely, I can talk about future, like from five years from now, what's gonna happen, but what I see now is we have congestion issues on our existing sites. First thing we are trying to do is, we are trying to deploy, deploy our spectrum, which is available to us. We wanna use it first. So this is our, this project all about. There is no small cell deployment plan in this town as of now.
And, and so it's not contemplated at the present time?
No.
All right. And I want to reassure the, the members of the planning board that we're gonna open this up to questions for planning board members. We're gonna move through the public, and then we'll get back to the, the planning board. So are there any other members of the public that wish to make a comment or ask questions?
Um, I see you, Weston, but first Rex was the second one that I saw. So Weston, you can go after Rex. Rex, you're up.
Is that Rex's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I have a question about the equipment that's being installed. I looked up the remote radio head and the antenna. I noticed that the the radio head seems to be the massive MIMO 64TR type of radio head. Am I, am I, did I understand that right? And I understand that those are used for beam forming, and I just wonder if that's what's gonna be going on, on this tower when those are installed. And then also, I'm curious what, what frequencies are gonna be utilized?
I think Wasif would be best to put the answer as far as.
Okay. So yes, you are right. Actually, we are going to use that massive MIMO unit, 64T, 64R. And we are planning to use 3,700 megahertz frequency band, which is C-band.
Uh, so what, what frequencies is that?
It's C-band, 3,700.
37 megahertz?
Yes, it's a mid-band frequency.
So is it, sorry, 37 gigahertz or?
No, no, 3,700 megahertz, 3,700 megahertz.
Okay. So isn't that, that's 3.7 gigahertz? Is that right?
It's the same thing, 3.7 gigahertz. It's 3,700 megahertz. It's just different units.
Okay, and is that a new frequency than what's been currently used?
For Verizon, yes. It's a new frequency. It's one of the new mid-band frequency that Verizon is using now. So if you talk about this particular town, yes, it's a new frequency, but Verizon Wireless has been using these frequencies.
All right. I appreciate your, your information there. And is it a stronger power output also?
No. So power per megahertz is the same thing. It's again, a mid-band frequency.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to make a comment or ask a question?
Weston.
Weston, tell us your full name, please.
Weston Blivock. I'm a longtime resident of Woodstock, New York.
Thank you.
Today, when I was looking through the application for Verizon to the Woodstock Planning Board, I also took the opportunity to look up the spec sheet for this particular antenna. And I want, was particularly interested in the RF output power. And so the engineer, Mr. Sharif, just confirmed now that the following power requirements apply to stations transmitting 37 megahertz. And according to the spec sheet, the power of each fixed or base station transmitting in that band should have a county with a population density of 100 or fewer persons per square mile. But it seems to me that Woodstock and Ulster County have more than 100 people. So there's a problem, it seems to me.
Is it, can the applicant address that concern?
Could you clarify the concern? I was a little confused by the.
In the spec sheet for this particular antenna, which is a Samsung MT6407-77A antenna, the spec sheet by Samsung, when they tested the power for this particular, the RF output power, they said the following power requirements apply to stations transmitting in the 3,700 megahertz, which your engineer just confirmed that this band would be, or this antenna would be operating in. It said that the power of each all right, the power of each fixed or base station and transmitting in this range and located in any county with population density of 100 or fewer people per square mile. So it seems to me that there might be a problem, because we have more than 100 people per square mile here in Woodstock and even Ulster County. It seems to me that this antenna should be used in a place where it is very rural, with very, you know, much fewer people.
I'm kind of picking up what you're saying. I, I think you, Wasif can help clarify for me, but the, it, remember that this cell tower is just covering the area around it. So while the town of Woodstock may have more residents, not every. So while the town of Woodstock may have more residents, not everyone in Woodstock is using that Verizon frequency and Verizon service all at the same time on that one tower. You might be more on the border and using another tower, or there might be a a different coverage. Wasif, can, does that make sense? Is that, is, can you elaborate there for us, maybe?
To some extent. If I remember correctly, there is no restriction. I'm not really sure where is it mentioned in the cut sheet? I, to be honest, do not understand the question fully yet. But there is nothing like that. There there is no limitation, like if he is talking about population density or something. Yeah, this antenna is supposed to be using.
Part of our application, a a report that shows the frequencies being proposed and what strengths they would be emitting signals on and verifying that all of those would be well within the FCC ranges and safety. And then that's been something that was submitted as part of our package to the town of Woodstock.
This is.
Certified by an engineer in that field that certifies that it's all up to the FCC codes.
Yes, Donovan, but this Stuart Lippin again, this the the member of the public is raising a question of some information that he gleaned from a specification sheet for a particular antenna that's being installed, where he has concern that the the information indicates that it's it's appropriate for a certain lower level of population density than there is in the town. So are there any further specific comments that that either the member of the public or the applicant can want to make towards that question?
Well, I I I think that, you know, generally in past board meetings and also public hearings, we've always been concerned about the power output of these devices. So, yes, of course, the applicant says that the, everything is according to the FCC. But, you know, this spec sheet is also saying that everything's in accordance. But I'm expressing something that's from the spec sheet that I don't feel is being adequately answered by the applicant.
I'll give the applicant one more opportunity to to address if this you can.
Can I also ask, can you cite the port where in the spec sheet this is so they can maybe put their eyes on it?
Yes, of course. I can't can't share a screen, but I'll send it to the planning board. I'll send it to them. Then they can, she can share it with the applicant.
Well, is it part of their application or you're on a page number that they can then?
Yeah, just, yeah, Weston.
Yes.
Read what, yeah, read what the page says on top.
Well, I just copied and pasted. Let me see. I'll go back to, I'll just have to lose you for a moment.
Can I ask a question that might clarify this issue?
Go ahead.
When, when the documentation that Weston found says suitable for a certain area, what does suitable mean? Does that mean it's optimum in terms of outreach? Does that mean it's safe or not safe in terms of particular densities of population? What is the meaning of saying something is suitable for a particular population?
Well, it sounded like what Donovan was saying was it had more to do with the coverage area.
It's talking about how many people could it could cover, you know, at one time or in that area. And so again, it's not that tower and that frequency isn't designed to cover every resident of Woodstock all at the same time. It's just designed to cover the Verizon customers in that area and around that tower.
Excuse me, Donovan, let me, let me suggest that we're talking past each other. I think what you are saying, how many, is how many users can it serve? And that that standard has to do with how many users it can serve. And that is maybe not the question that's being asked. The question that's being asked is, is it safe with a particular density of population? It's a different question. Am I right, Weston?
Yes.
And the 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 report that we submitted as part of our application studies all of that and has deemed it's well within the safety like.
So this is Stuart Lippin again. Let me jump in on on this question because it's an interesting one of coverage versus exposure of the humans that are within the broadcast, you know, area of this energy that's being put out. So Donovan, you you rightfully said that there's a report that's been provided to the planning board which states that the the equipment change is gonna remain will 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 not result in exceeding the limits prescribed by the FCC for exposure. And in fact, it says they're well within those. But one question I had, and I I was gonna hold it till later, but may as well ask it now since we're on this subject. Your report deals only with the equipment outputs of the Verizon equipment that you're proposing to put on the tower. Should we also be, isn't there a concern about the total output of all antennas on the tower rather than just Verizon's array? Because if it's a question of exposure of humans to the field of electromagnetic energy that's coming from the tower, wouldn't it be relevant to understand how much your output is being added to whatever other output is coming from the other carriers on the tower? In other words, the sum total rather than just Verizon's contribution to the energy. Do you understand my question?
I I I think I understand your question. Yeah, I think at this point, all we can talk to and all the, you know, we're addressing in this application is the Verizon project. I, you know, I I I wouldn't be able to answer to what AT&amp;T is is doing or T-Mobile or or somebody else. And we we would have to review those. And I believe those projects were prior reviewed by your board and and approved, if I understand correctly.
Well, whatever we approve, we approve. But it was all based on the reports that that were given to us. And I don't recall that there was an overall, you know, calculation of the total electromagnetic energy output from the tower as a whole, as opposed to the particular applicant's sector that was brought before us. And I'm raising that because Crown Castle manages the tower for the town, as you know. And I would think that Crown has the data available to it across all of the tenants' submissions to be able to enlighten us as to what the total energy output is from all these antennas so that we can understand what the total exposure is coming from the tower rather than just from your particular applicant's equipment, which presumably is less than the overall. John, you have your hand up?
I do. I I understood one thing, and now I'm hearing another. By what Weston read and he, the questions he's asking, has to do with radiation of a signal on the population, as opposed to that document that he read, that sounds like it's not a radiation issue. It's a connectivity issue. So that if indeed there was a population greater than the one hundred, Verizon would have a hard time connecting with its customers. Now, that then says, okay, how many Verizon customers are there in the town of Woodstock? I have no idea. I'm not one of them. So I guess I I kind of hear two different things going on, one having to do with radiation.
Well, because that's because the way Weston was reading the, I'm, I don't mean to. Yeah. But it sounds like the way he was reading the question about suitable was to do with some sort of power output or radiation, when really that language was, like you said, in reference to.
That's why I raised the distinction. That's exactly why I raised it.
Yes, thank you.
Weston?
But this, actually, if I read paragraph two and three, it goes to radiation and says the the power of each fixed or base station transmitting in the thirty-seven to thirty-nine eighty megahertz band and situated in any geographic location other than that described in J one, which would have to do with a hundred. This section is limited to an EIRP of sixteen hundred forty watts megahertz. This limit applies to the aggregate power of all antenna elements in any given sector of a base station. Mobile and portable stations are limited to one watt EIR, EIRP and so on. So it does, it's limiting to aggregate radiation power.
Does the applicant wish to make any comment or response to what gentleman just said?
I'm I'm without like seeing that document that he's talking, it's hard to understand. And you know, that that's a a spec sheet that's produced by the manufacturer of the antenna. And those are more, I think, to John, I'm not sure if I'm saying your name, last name correctly, Laval, his point about, I think that that's more talking about a capacity issue as opposed to how Weston may be interpreting it. But again, I I'm not looking at that document. I I I don't, it's hard for me to to understand that.
I think Weston probably can share if if Melissa might might have to do something.
I sent the li, I sent the link to Melissa.
Weston, do you know how to share? I'm not in my email. Do you know how to share?
Well, I I sent the link to you and it deals with the RF output power. That's the section.
Hang on, I'm looking.
I'll give Melissa a minute to see if she can bring up the link.
All right, Judy, share screen.
Well, you sent it to me?
No, no, no.
Oh, here you go.
This is what Weston just did. So now Weston, what do I do? Hit download?
Yeah, or just just open it up. Don't hit download. Just open it up and then you, your little box will open up.
That looks it like it.
Yep. So then just, you have to scan down a bit to the.
Um, real quick, though, just if you can see, I'm not sure who CTK Co. Limited is. That looks like a, I'm not sure who that is. So I I don't think this is a Samsung spec sheet. If it was produced by Samsung, it would, it would clearly state Samsung at the top. I'm not sure who to CTK.
Well, contact point, it says right here, the company, Samsung Electronics Client Information, right? It's a testing company for Samsung wanted to test the capability of this antenna. So they turned to CTK to do it, and this is it.
Weston, is this, is this document included in the application that you reviewed?
No, I went online to look for it. I wanted to find out what the spec sheet for was for this antenna.
What page do you want, Weston?
Well, it's, you have to go down to the RF part of it.
Yeah, sorry, what, yeah, Weston, you just gotta tell me where I need to go.
Four, section four. So it's the next.
Screw me for a loop because I thought this was in the, in the application we received, but it wasn't. This is something, just for the board to clarify, this is something Weston found online.
Right.
PTK and where, why Donovan had no idea who this was. Continue. Weston.
So this is the RF output power, which I was interested in. And so this is the twenty, so twenty-seven fifty is where I read that section from. So the, your engineer, Mr. Sharif, mentioned that it's in the thirty-seven hundred band, which is first line there. And now you read about the hundred and fewer, and then section two, three talk about propagation.
Again, I just, I'm not sure, you know, I appreciate your insight, Weston, and looking into this, but I I I I've been in this industry for a while and I've never heard of this company before. We can't verify the legitimacy of this document or if they're affiliated with Samsung or that I I don't know if this is relevant to our application and in determining that if this is an eligible facilities request or not, because I think that's the, really the nature of our meeting here tonight.
Again, so this is Stuart Lippin. Just, I'll give this one last shot at a question. Can the applicant clarify, is there a relation between power output of these antennas and the exposure limits to humans on the ground? Can someone explain?
I missed the first part of the question. Say that one more time. Is there a correlation? Exposure?
Yeah, what's the relationship between power output, which this document seems to address? And exposure limits of radiation to humans on the ground from the antenna array?
There is a correlation, but in the report that we've produced from a certified engineer, they've determined that that power level and exposure is well lower than what's been deemed safe. So we are well within the the safe range and applicable limit.
Yeah, I'm I'm aware of that report. And again, I don't see that it addresses the aggregate exposure from the entire tower as opposed to just your your array of antennas. Do you agree with that, that that his analysis doesn't perform an aggregate calculation of what the overall exposure is from the tower after these changes?
Yeah, you know, we, we're here representing Verizon and applying on behalf of Verizon and Verizon doesn't have the they can't speak to AT&amp;T or T-Mobiles, you know. But I think if, in in that you all have previously reviewed their applications and approved what they were doing, this is, you know, just like that in that, you know, it's a separate, you know, thing from from those. So, you know, all we can do is talk to the Verizon, the scope of work and what's involved with the Verizon project.
Well, I understand that's your position today, but I I want to suggest, and it's just my own view, that it it might be more useful to the town as a whole if Crown Castle, as the manager of the tower, could produce the aggregate information for the aggregate exposure of humans on the ground to the total radiation being broadcast from the tower rather than just one particular applicant. I know that there's only one applicant in front of us, and I get that. But in terms of the concerns of the population, the residents, taxpayers and so on, since the tower serves the entire town and Crown Castle is the manager of the town, is agent for the town board, it it, I think it would be useful and enlightening for Crown Castle to provide us what the aggregate impact is on exposure from each from each request that's coming before us.
I agree.
That's just my thought. And anyway, John, I see I have your hand up, but I do want to get to other members of the public, if you wouldn't mind.
Can I just ask a quick question? I agree with you, Stuart, a hundred percent.
Who is this speaking?
Ben Williams.
Are you a member of the public?
Uh, yes. I I don't live in Woodstock, but I live close by.
Okay, go ahead and make your comment.
Well, my comment and question is if the one hundred or less is what this antenna is geared for and Woodstock has quite a bit more than a hundred per square mile, then wouldn't they have to almost immediately increase the power to reach everybody there? So isn't it kind of an underpowered antenna that is gonna actually have to be stronger to reach everybody? And it sounds like Verizon maybe hasn't done their homework.
Well, thank you for your comment.
To that point?
Go ahead, Donovan. You may go, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think Wasif, as as the RF engineer, could talk to that, that there's no plans to increase the power. The proposed power is.
And how would you reach, how would you reach the the more than a hundred people per square mile? If that's all that antenna is geared for?
So that hundred people, okay, so that hundred people per square mile is coming from that document, which I haven't seen before and which is not looking to be correct, because I was looking at the power values that was shown. It was like more than three thousand and we are actually using two hundred watts per sixty megahertz. And that document was using thirty-eight some, thirty-eight hundred something per megahertz. So here we have a huge difference. So I do not think that document is accurate. I'm not sure where that is coming from, so I cannot comment where that number is coming from.
Well, it seems kind of strange that Verizon wouldn't have looked at the whole power output of the tower, like Stuart said, in their homework. the whole power output of the tower, like Stuart said, in their homework to present their package. So I don't really.
For Verizon.
Honestly.
Like Donovan mentioned, we have already submitted a report for Verizon.
No, like, like Stuart mentioned in the end, that, that why wasn't the entire output of that antenna, not just your guys' proposed antenna, but what's on that tower?
Well, I don't know if Verizon has access to the other carriers, the equipment, but certainly Crown Castle as agent for the town managing the whole tower, I would think that they would have that data or access to that data in their capacity as manager of the overall tower. But you know, I'm, I'm making these comments in a public forum because I'm assuming that the town board is interested in, in this issue. And, and they're the ones that have the relation with Crown Castle. And so certainly I think it's, it's within the power of the town board to require their agent to gather this information in connection with these applications. Because they're not under the same constraints that we are in terms of shot clocks and restriction from considering certain issues and so on. So I, I won't belabor that point. Are there any other members of the public that have questions or comments about this application? If so, raise your hand, let us know. And Melissa, help me out here.
I don't see anyone. Raise your hand or get my attention if you want to speak. I'll give you a few more seconds.
If someone has their camera turned off, they're going to have to use the reaction thing to raise their hand. Or turn on their camera.
Stuart, it's all you.
All right. So are there any members of the planning board that have any comments or concerns they wish to bring up at this time? John Laval.
I think we have a classic case of apples and oranges here. I really do. Because I think what they're addressing in that document is the connectivity of Verizon customers not to exceed one hundred per square mile.
The thing though, John, is that we're now at the point where we don't even know that that document is accurate at all to begin with and and it's not part of their application.
All right, let's let John finish his comment and then we'll come back.
It seems like they've hired some sort of a company to do their analysis for Samsung. I, I do not dispute the validity of the document and it doesn't matter. Because do you have one hundred Verizon customers per square mile? Number one. Number two is if you actually do the entire township, we have less than one hundred persons per square mile, less. But this antenna does not cover the entire township. It covers the most concentrated part of the which would exceed the one hundred. But again, we have other carriers and we have people who don't have cell phones. Such beasts still exist. So why are we doing this? This is apples and oranges.
Well, John, when you say, why are we doing this? What is this? What do you mean?
The debate on this document. Not to, it's, the number one hundred is being thrown out there. The whole thing's fallacious. It really is. And it's the one hundred would pertain to only Verizon customers and connectivity, their connectivity to the tower. Now, I understand transmission. I do hold an amateur extra license, which requires a considerable amount of information to pass an exam on towers and antennas and power levels. So I do speak their language. And this is, it's a non-issue at this point. It truly is. This is not an issue.
Being coverage versus output.
We're talking about two hundred watts on a tower on Upper California Quarry Road. It's nothing. As an amateur radio licensee, I can transmit up to one thousand watts and not ask for your permission or anyone's permission. I have a license to do so. So that's, I mean, this is really, it's beyond the pale. We're not talking about a radio signal that is going to be ionizing. And that's the concern, ionization. So you don't want to have a lot of people in the path of something that is highly ionizing. At two hundred watts, when you start measuring what that effect is going to be, let's say in the, on Tinker Street, in the middle of Woodstock. The number that was quoted a while ago with, to exceed a particular number of, let's say, milliwatts hitting someone at that point. It's impossible. Two hundred watts on California Quarry, it's a fraction of that. The number, the wattage that's required for a cell phone to function today is a fraction of what was required twenty years ago, twenty five years ago. It's a fraction. So they've done a very good job of being able to minimize that overall, the industry. Case called.
Connor, did you want to speak further to that question?
I mean, not particularly. I mean, I think I understand what the, what the confusion was to some extent. And I mean, I, this, again, in terms of their, what they've submitted in their application, no, I don't have any questions.
Are there any other members of the planning board that have any comments or questions about this application? Judith Kerman?
Yeah, my impression is that we're getting more applications through Crown Castle in the recent few years than we had in a while before that. The question that you have asked is a reasonable one to ask of Crown Castle for the future. It doesn't really address this particular application. But it's a separate question, but I think it's actually a good question. I mean, the, the, the total of all of the carriers that are housed on the tower.
The aggregate, yeah.
The aggregate is the question.
And that is something we could ask Crown Castle to report to us on, but it doesn't really answer the question of this application. I agree.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions from members of the planning board? Hearing none. Are there any other comments or questions from members of the public that are present at this meeting? Okay, hearing none. Does the applicant wish to make any further comments during this public hearing? The applicant.
I think we're, we're generally good. We, I, I appreciate everyone's time. You know, just reminding everyone that the, the, the nature of this is so we can improve connectivity for the, the, the town members of Woodstock for, just like we were having at the beginning of this call, the connectivity and the bandwidth issues. You know, for things like that, to have, you know, people be able to work from home to stay connected in emergency situations. Like that's, that's what this is for. This is, you know, imperative to, to help out the residents of, you know, Woodstock so they have, are better connected and have better emergency services when needed and from those reasons.
All right. I'm satisfied that everybody's had a, a good and fair opportunity to address the application. So I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
All moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
All right. So the applicant, the hearing is closed and now the question is, do we want to act on the application this time? Is there a motion to, with respect to the application? Let me, to my own question. It's my understanding under the law and our attorney's on the line, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but if the application does not substantially change the, or increase the dimensions of the, the tower or the array, then then it's a modification of the existing array, which constitutes an eligible facilities request, which we're obligated to approve under the federal laws that are, are put upon us by the federal government. So, and I don't see how the application substantially alters the physical dimensions of the tower within the meaning of the applicable rule. So I would entertain a motion. Someone wants to make it to approve this application as submitted.
All moved.
Second. Right. All in favor of approving the application as submitted?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion carries. The application is approved, subject to adoption of a formal resolution, which by the way, will have a provision requiring the maintenance of stealth socks on all speakers that are up on the tower. It was represented to us that those are already in place, but with respect to any additional equipment, they'll have to comply with the, with the permanent agreement issue.
We, I will.
All right.
Verizon Wireless team, that is it. It's paperwork after this. The board will vote on the resolution after and that will be emailed out to Lamar and his team. Probably Monday morning.
And I want to thank the applicant and Crown Castle for providing us people that have good knowledge of the, of the situation and answering all of our questions. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Peter and we can do our motion on the resolution later.
Okay. Thank you, Stuart. Thank you very much. Okay, folks, we're going to move on to our workshop content. And the first issue is fam acres. And I know that our attorney is here. I just saw him a second ago. There he is, John. So John, the issue that came up is that in fam acres, there's a great portion of property of land there that falls under the Woodstock Wetlands and Water Course protection. So all the wetlands and the wetland buffers and the streams and their buffers fall under the Woodstock Wetland and Water Course Protection Law. And that is under the jurisdiction of Woodstock. What can be done and what cannot be done in those areas. It's very clearly laid out in the law. The applicant has also decided to our happiness that they want to add a lot more property under a conservation easement. The question is.
Peter, not a conservation easement.
Right.
Area.
Conservation area.
Okay.
Need to be defined legally.
You're right.
So the question is, those areas that are under the Woodstock jurisdiction are different than those areas that they have now put into conservation area. What is under Woodstock jurisdiction is under the Woodstock jurisdiction and can be managed and they can issue a cease and desist order, whatever on those areas. What is in the conservation area is managed by, I'm not quite sure who and under what code or what law. So John, maybe you can help us out on that.
Yeah, sure. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Okay. So you're talking about two things that I think you should think about as apples and oranges. And so those areas that are covered by Woodstock's law will be, as you suggested, they're covered by the law, they're enforceable by the town through the zoning enforcement officer. And so that's a, that's a protective measure that applies to the areas that fall within those zones. Though, the other areas that either overlap those or, or in addition to those areas are unprotected by law. So the deed restriction that's being offered by the applicant is one tool that's a, that is possible to be used to protect those areas separate and apart from the law. And one of the reasons that it would be good for the board to be considering protection that's in addition to the law is that, you know, the law functions as a protective mechanism for so long as the law is in effect. And it's possible for laws to be amended, changed or repealed in the future. And a deed restriction or a conservation easement provides protection in perpetuity. A little bit, you know, a conservation easement very strongly in perpetuity in, in the sense that the chances that it's going to remain in place are almost a hundred percent. Deed restrictions also, for the most part, remain in place in perpetuity, but there's a little more flexibility with deed restrictions about them being able to be extinguished. The conservation easement, once it's put down, is very difficult to extinguish. The other, so those having a mechanism in place that is in addition to the law, I think if, if there's a consensus that there are certain areas on this property that should be protected in the long run. I think the deed restriction is, is a good idea. Even though the town of Woodstock does protect some of those areas. I think that the thing that you want to think about, I know there have been some comments from your planner. I also was able to look at a letter from John Capello, who's representing, he's a leniency lawyer who's representing a neighbor. Who, and I think that both that your planner and Mr. Capello, in their comments about the deed restriction that's been offered as part of the application, would like to see the provisions of that deed restriction strengthened. And I think that my opinion, having looked at the, at the proffered deed restriction, is that I think there is room to strengthen the deed restriction. I think there also should be, I would suggest that there be a conversation had with the applicant about the possibility of using a conservation easement instead of deed restrictions. And again, the reason I think that it would be a good idea to explore that is that a conservation easement, the assurance of protection in perpetuity is extremely strong. Also, the holder of that easement, usually a land trust ends up taking some responsibility for the monitoring of that easement. Which means that somebody comes and, you know, and visits that easement area on an annual basis and looks at whether or not the provisions of the easement are being are being complied with. And then if, if there are violations, land trusts have the ability, you know, the holder of the easement has the ability to go to court to enforce that easement. And in many cases that I've seen also, the town can be made, can be given enforcement powers and which would allow the town to be able to go to court to enforce the easement as well. So I don't know, that's kind of long and windy, but I hope it gets to the question that you asked. Can I jump in with a question? So would the town have the same leverage if it was just a deed restriction in terms of being able to enforce the restriction or?
I think if the town was made party to the deed, to the deed restriction, yes, you have the ability to go to court and enforce the four corners of the document.
But how would the town be made a party to a deed restriction? That's the deed between a seller and a buyer.
Well, the party, the, the party that's putting the deed restriction down would have to consent to that. And the town would have to consent to being a party and be willing to sign onto the agreement. And we'd have to show that there is a benefit to the community. To show that there's a reason for having the town as a party.
Judy?
Yeah, I guess I have two questions, John. One is, last meeting, Alec Glad mentioned it a vague sort of way that there might be a homeowners association that could be responsible for enforcing the conservation. And I'm wondering if that is a feasible and advisable method. The other is, they also said that they felt that the same kinds of restrictions that are in the wetlands and water courses would be on the rest of it, but I don't know how that would be a legal requirement.
Yeah, I don't know. I know Mr. Glad's on the call here, but the homer, I don't, I'm not sure exactly. I know that he did reach out to me and I think it's really my memory, not because he didn't give me the information, but I, I believe that what I recall is that the applicant's applying for the CPS seven letter, which is an exemption from having to have a homeowners association. So I'm, I'm not sure that there's a homeowners association.
I'm not sure that there's a homeowners association in the offing, but.
That's why I'm asking, one of the reasons I'm asking the question, it seemed a little indefinite to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Alex here, I think we can just clarify. I mean, we might as well have, have the conversation.
Yeah, sure. We are forming a homeowners association. And the primary purpose of that will be for the management of the private roadway that we're proposing as part of the application. The CPS seven filing, it's still for form, forming a homeowners association. It's just requires less paperwork because of the diminished, diminutinous nature of the interest in the homeowners association, which is basically just maintenance of the roadway. And then as part of the last meeting, we did throw out too, as an option for enforcement is that the HOA could also take up enforcement of the conservation restrictions as well as, as a kind of third party enforcer.
Would it be, would it be possible to have the homeowners association own the conservation areas?
No, because the way they're spread out over the different large lots, like there's not a common lot that we're making the open space or the conservation area. And that's, and that's the reason why we don't think a conservation easement is a good idea because it's not like a publicly accessible space where someone from the land trust could go and check out to make sure everything's okay. They would have to be walking past people's houses through their private property in order to get to the areas that are going to be under the conservation restriction. And they're not accessible anyways. If you look at the subdivision plaque, because basically there's wetlands that go all around it and we're building all the houses on the inside. And then on the outside is where we're adding the conservation restrictions.
But it is contiguous.
Yes, but it is contiguous basically across the top and bottom.
Yeah, well, I, I, okay. I mean, we can talk about those things. I know I have a conservation easement on my property and Ceni Hudson has to walk through my property to get to it to do their monitoring every year. And they just come and do, you know, they'd let me know when they're coming, but they come and do it. And I'm, you know, I'm on the board of two land trusts and I know that there are even for inaccessible areas, you know, sometimes drones are used to do monitoring on an annual basis. And that's actually something that's becoming more popular just because of manpower issues, but those are, I think those are things we could talk about if we want to have a further conversation about that. But go ahead, Stuart.
Yeah, yeah. The drone idea popped in my head. She covered it. I sensed from the last meeting that the applicant seemed to be more favorable to deed restrictions rather than a conservation easement. And I'm wondering if like, if it's, if easement is more beneficial to the town. And this is really maybe a question for, to discuss with our lawyer, but I you know, to me, the enforcement of, of the conservation is paramount. And if we have greater ability to do that with a conservation easement, shouldn't we lean in that direction? John has his hand up. John? You're muted, you're muted.
What part could Woodstock Land Conservancy, since it's a strong organization, play in this?
Well, there has, you know, for a conservation easement to be placed on the property, there has to be qualified entity that's willing to hold the easement. And so, you know, that would be a linchpin to, or a keystone to the entire idea.
They're a strong organization, John.
Yeah, but they have to be willing, they have to be willing to take it. Like I said, I'm on the board of two land trusts and I know that we say no to them. You know, plenty. Because you got to remember, you're taking on with the easement, you're taking on responsibility as the easement holder. You're taking on the responsibility of doing the monitoring annually and enforcing violations. And there are land trusts that are nervous about conservation areas that are in close proximity to denser development because they're concerned about the increased chance of their having to be put in the position of having to enforce violations. So it's something that would have to be explored. It, you know, the equation would have to be, you'd have to see if you have the pieces necessary to put that equation together.
Could we introduce Woodstock Land Conservancy into this discussion?
You can have the applicant speak to them for sure, if they're willing to do that.
Any other questions from board members for John? Judy?
What are the other options? You know, that's the thing that I think we don't understand. What would a deed restriction entail? What kinds of responsibility would the town have if they accepted it? What are the tax implications, which is something I've always wondered about?
Yeah, I, I, you know, the tax implications, I'm not a tax expert, you know, I know enough to be dangerous with regard to, you know, conservation easements and whatnot. I mean, there's a, there's a possibility that if the conservation is, a conservation easement is put down on the property and it's not being compelled by the municipality, there's a chance that the applicant could get a tax benefit from the donation, but I don't think that should be something that, you know, that's not really something that should be driving the planning perspective on this. I, I, I think the options that are in front of you are the ones that we've discussed. I think a deed restriction and a conservation easement are probably the best tools. As I said, you know, the conservation easement does offer some advantages, but that's not to say that the deed restriction could not also, if carefully fashioned, couldn't also act as an effective protective tool. And I think both the conservation easement and the deed restriction, in my opinion, are more effective than relying upon, you know, the laws of the town of Woodstock or the laws of any town, just because of the transient nature of, of laws. So, you know, a deed restriction is, would be a very powerful tool. I think I'd like to do some work on the one, you know, in other words, a deed restriction is like a contract. The ones that work the best are the ones that have the greatest specificity, the ones that anticipate potential problems and have the greatest specificity with regard to what areas are being covered and what activities are allowed and what activities aren't. And I think that the, the more specific and the clearer the document can be with regard to that in those instances, I think a deed restriction can provide good, effective protection.
May I ask a question and add a, an element? The question is, would a properly designed homeowners association in addition to a deed restriction be a, be a benefit? Or is it not that much difference?
Well, the homeowners association, as Alec suggested, may be a, a benefit in the sense that it may be another entity that has the ability to enforce a deed restriction. But the homeowners association's primary purpose will, its reason for existence will be to manage the, the common infrastructure. In this case, it's going to be the road. And that's, and that's going to be the, the focus of the homeowners association. That's why I was inquiring about, you know, if they owned common, in, in instances where homeowners associations own not only infrastructure, but also common areas, like if they own the open space, then they have a direct responsibility for that open space. But their responsibility here, you know, they wouldn't have any real responsibility for the, for a deed restricted area if it's not within their, you know, it's just not within their jurisdiction. They'll be concentrating on the road.
Thank you. If I can add my comment, Peter. This is the first instance of something that we may look at later if the new zoning laws proposed pass in a form at all like what we're working on now, speaking as a member of the task force. So if we can identify mechanisms for protection of the open land that seem broadly applicable and understand the different benefits of the different kinds. For this example, it will also carry forward into future work and might affect our view of the zoning proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board members have questions for John regarding this issue? All right, Melissa, I guess we're going to take what John has told us and apply it to how we look at the the approval of it. Okay, so I don't know, when is our next meeting with fam?
What, I haven't, I haven't set a meeting yet. Today, I emailed Matt's comments and Dennis's comments. What I'm asking for from Mettenbach is one more set of plans. And then I think we can move forward with wetlands and water course findings that we could do and then probably schedule a public hearing. In the process of all of this, but we want to see on the plans, all of their, everything that they brought to the table at the last meeting, we want to see them implemented on the plans.
Okay.
How's that sound?
It, it, well, it hasn't really answered my basic question, which is on the map, it shows the Woodstock Wetlands and Water Course barriers, which are protected. And that's on the map. It was delineated, it was surveyed, located and put on the map. They've included that within their conservation area. And I don't see how it can be included because they're saying in the conservation area is going to have the same restrictions as the Woodstock Wetlands and Water Course has. But Woodstock has no authority outside of our protected area.
John, this is a you question. This is.
My question is, on the, on the, on the map that we are going to approve of the subdivision, are they going to include the Woodstock Wetlands in their conservation area or are they separate? Because they should be separate, the way I see it, but.
No, I think, I think they should be separate. I, I think that the, the deed restriction should be the, the areas that are covered by the deed restriction, if that's the way that the board's going to go to protect those areas. That should be sort of front and center. I, I, I think, you know, Alec can speak for himself, but I, I think perhaps what was going on is just to include those areas that are covered by Woodstock as a means of being helped, you know, being helpful and explaining that there's another layer of protection out there. But I think that I think that the map should define, you know, the conservation area and then the, the deed restriction should be keyed to the boundary, to those boundaries that are shown on the map. And then within the deed restriction, regardless of what, you know, if, if the choice were to be made to have the same protections that Woodstock, you know, the Woodstock Wetland law has, my suggestion would be that those should just be repeated and implemented into and, and set forth in the, in the deed restriction. They, they're separate, but by incorporating them, you would just take the same principles and the same protections and make them part of the deed restriction. I hope that makes sense.
Yep, yep, it does. Judy, uh, last.
I, I think we have some confusion here.
All right, Judy, hang on. Peter, did John answer your que, I, I got it. Did John answer? I think we're good, right?
Yes, yes.
I'm, I'm not convinced we are, and let me tell you why. I think John is saying all of the conservation areas should be deed restricted. Some of it may also be under wetlands, but wetlands can go away if the town law changes. I thought Peter was saying they have to be separate. And I think John is saying it all should be in the conservation area. And if some of it is also in the wetlands area, that's cool.
Well, what, what Peter say, I, I think you're both right. I know it's not going to clear things up, but I, you know, what we're just saying, Peter's saying separate in the sense that the deed restriction is separate from the town's regulations. But I, I think that for our purposes, for discussing how the planning board is going to accomplish or help accomplish the conservation of these areas, I, I think the deed restriction should be the tool that's used to do that. And and that should be a freestanding protection tool that doesn't have anything to do with, it exists.
But the confusion is, the confusion is still there.
Okay.
Let me put it another way. The same piece of land, let's say of two pieces of land that are next to each other, one of them is in the wetlands area and the other one isn't. They could both be in the deed restriction.
Yes.
And they should both be in the deed restriction. Then if one of them also has the town wetland protection, that's gravy. And it has to be separately delineated, but they're both in the deed restriction.
Yes, yes. And, and, and also remember that the protection provided by the, by the deed restriction wouldn't be necessarily dependent on the land being wetlands, because as you know,
Exactly.
Wetlands move around, so.
Exactly.
And that's exactly what we're proposing. The deed restriction is a, is a, is a separate standalone document, I think, maybe.
Right. The distinction between what the documents are doing and what the land actually does that I wanted to make clear. Because I thought that was where the confusion was.
Yeah.
Maybe it was my confusion.
Yeah, I think part of it came from, because we basically just took what was in the wetland and water conservation law, picked it up, put it in that separate private agreement, basically are applying the same restrictions on the unprotected land. But it also is adding that long-term private protection on the wetland and water course, should the law ever change.
So you've got plot A and plot B, and A and B are both deed restricted, but only B is in the town law. But they all have the same rules because you've made that for A plus B.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, and I think that, I think that's a good start because I think what Alec was trying to do is, you know, the, the wetlands and water course law represents, that's a great starting point because that represents something that, that the folks in Woodstock have already decided that, you know, those are protections that they want to have in place. But you can, it's a starting point. And so you can take that and then you can look at the property as a whole. Both wet, you know, those properties, you know, Judy, that you're talking about that are next to each other, look at the, at the, those properties as a whole and have a discussion about how do we want to protect these? And we might use some of the protections from the water, you know, we might bring over some of the wetlands protections from the law, or we might not.
You're saying, Alec is saying they want to, and I certainly wouldn't object to that.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a, it was a good way to get, you know, it was a good way to start thinking about it.
Yeah. Peter, I, I kind, I didn't really understand what you were saying. When Barry said last time, double protection, that kind of solidified more. And then what John said, I think that's the easiest way to look at it is it's, they're, they are presenting you saying, we are going to have double protection. And me, Judy, that's where I was like, okay, they're, they're on to what we're asking for.
The parts that the water course are double, but everything's got the same.
Yeah, it's a Venn diagram, you know, because there's some, there's a little bit of overlap, but not, not everywhere.
Okay.
John, we appreciate you so much.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, thank you, John. Thank you very much. That helps us. Thanks, John.
Okay.
Okay, so we have now one other discussion on the workshop content, which is general standards, part two, community character. The definition of how to apply to planning board applications. And my point there is if we have an application that is permitted within a zone with a special use permit, or we have an application for a site plan review, even though the proposed action is permitted or can be permitted under special use permit, how do we look at the community character part of it that we have to review under general standards? In other words, it may be permitted, but, and I can't speak to specific cases, but let's just say we're talking about a hotel or a motel or a restaurant or something that is permitted, but we find it in an area, although it's permitted, might not meet what we think is the community character. And my question to the board is, how do you define community character? John?
Well, I won't say how you define it, but hey, I have a question. Have you, do you make use of the EAF workbooks when you're going through and doing part two of an environmental assessment form?
I do.
Okay. So you know, Melissa, that, so the, the EAF workbooks have been developed by DEC for lead agencies. So when the, when you're making your determination of significance and you're going through and you're completing part two of the EAF, it, the workbook provides a lot of detail, questions and answers, and also it just gives you guidance and explanations about how to think of, think about the issues that are listed as the items on the EAF port two. And as you know, And as you know, community character on a seventeen or eighteen, community character impacts on aesthetics are both in there for consideration. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that's a, a resource that's out there. That's available to maybe give you some guidance. And I, I don't know how many of you knew Drayton, but she wrote an article about community character. You know, and assessing community character. I'll see if I can dig that up. If I can, I'll send that to Melissa and she can circulate that. And maybe that may be helpful as well.
That would be great.
Just, just kind of backwards. Every time that we receive an EAF, I, I fill out the form, which is basically all of that. Um, and then it's, you know, applied to seeker and we do this for each case. So, um, yes, but the, the workbook has much more information. So thank you, John, that was.
Yeah, I, I, I think that if you can, um, you don't, you, you don't have to change your procedures, but it might be a good idea. To circulate the link to the workbooks. And for, uh, I know you guys have, I know you don't have spare time, but. Uh, sometime that you're interested or when it comes up, if you can get in a, a little bit into the habit of looking into the workbooks for help. If there's, um, you know, even if there's only one item on the EAF part two that is. Giving you some difficulty or you're having trouble figuring out how to think about it. I think once you get used to it as a resource, it might be, uh, it could be a really great thing going forward.
Great, Judy has a question?
Well, I'm going to explore, I'm going to expose my ignorance here, John. But I would have thought that, I assumed that that was like environment in the sense of the natural environment and maybe traffic. But things like, um, social character or street life, I would not expect it to. Address, and those are what I would think. Not just aesthetics, but something that has more to do with the culture of a place.
Well, commu- community character is specifically listed on the EAF. And I would suggest to you that. That the seeker review. Is. Probably because it's specifically there, I would suggest that the seeker review may be the most powerful planning tool for dealing with adverse impacts to community character. And. It, the, a community character is mentioned specifically and also aesthetics. It's at the end where, you know, impacts to historic resources, aesthetics, community character come at the end of the AF part two. But they're there and there, there definitely is power within those sections. Community character, you know, there isn't a completely universal definition of it, so. You know, but, but it's just like visual, it's just like, uh, visual impacts, you know, DEC has a. DEC has guidance on assessing visual impacts. I, I, I think there's some limitations to that because of the types of impacts that they deem important. But it still provides it some framework for, there's more objectivity to making decisions about impacts to these. To these resources than you would think.
I see Stuart's hand, but to defend Judy. We rarely see a full EAF. We typically only see part one. It has to be a much larger project for to.
Well, you, you know, you have the ability.
We do.
Some of my other clients, uh, you have the ability to ask for FBAFs for any unlisted action. And I suggest to you that you should consider the practice of asking, you get, I mean, the short EAF, to be honest with you. Isn't really much use and.
More environmental, as Judy said.
Well, I, there's an, there's an appropriate place for it, because not every application demands pulling out your magnifying glass and looking at all these things. And to put everybody through, you know, the trouble of, you know, you need profession to really do an EAF, a full EAF part one. A lot of times you need professional help to do that, because it's required, that kind of knowledge is required to answer the questions. But you should think about asking for a full EAF maybe more often than you do. I mean, there's not much of a downside to it. You get more information and if that doesn't lead anywhere. You know, that, that just, it just helped, more information in your hands helps you make a better decision on your determination of significance, whether that's a pos deck or a neg deck.
All right.
Excellent.
Thanks, John.
Yes, excellent, thanks, John. Yeah, it just, it occurs to me that community character could include what the, uh, whether the residents are, whether it's a long time permanent household neighborhood. As opposed to, um, uh, completely transient, you know, population. And where on that spectrum does the character of this particular neighborhood fall? I mean, to me, that, that's as much a community character as, as anything else.
Yeah, community, community characters sometimes referred to as, well, how is the impact to the sense of, your sense of place? And if you think of it that way, and then you're able to really put, you know, you're able to define, at least in part, what the, you know, what are the characteristics that contribute to your sense of place? Um, and those things that you mentioned are definitely, you know, would definitely be contributors to painting that picture.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, anybody else have any comments for John about community character? Or I, I appreciate what he said, that we should follow that a little closer in some cases or a lot of cases. All right, very good. Uh, the next thing we have on our agenda is affordable housing, H O T F, and follow-up discussion. And. I know Judy sent us out, uh, the basic synopsis of the ideas.
But let, let me make a comment. First of all, Kirk Ritchie is here and he may have some comment to make. But I want to suggest, since the committee, since the task force is working hard incorporating the comments we've gotten from other town boards and committees and the public. We might want to come back to the planning board a little further down the road. When some of those changes have already been incorporated, because it may help, it may help straighten, sort things out and make it faster. But I don't know if Kirk has anything he wants to add. Looks like not.
We need to do dinner.
Yeah, Judith, I, thank you for the invitation and everyone to, for this opportunity. But I, I think I'd rather just hear some of the concerns or comments that people have. And then if there's any questions that may arrive. As a result of those comments or questions, then I'd be happy to speak to them. But in general, I, I want to echo what Judith just said, that, um, and forgive me for having my camera off. I, I'm, uh, in the kitchen here. So, hey, Stuart. So. I want to echo what Judith said. There's been a tremendous amount of, uh, it was actually a very good thing that we released version one. And we got a very, uh, a, a lot of comments from the pri- private sector, as well as comments from various boards. And all of those contribute, were reviewed extensively, all of those comments. And so we've incorporated much of the, of that into our thinking about what version two will be. And there'll be some significant changes, in, in my opinion, that will be reflective of those, of those comments. So Judith is alluding to that, and it may be more advantageous for us. Uh, to speak with this board when the second version is in a position where you could then look at that. And, um, and, and that would be closer to what would be deemed of the draft law. Whereas this version one, it was simply recommendations. And the adjustments to those recommendations will be reflected in version two. So other than that, I, I, and I do believe that, that they will be, uh, they will address some of the underlying concerns that may be present in this board as well as in the public.
Okay, any other board members have comment to that?
Thank you, Kirk.
Oh, well, I've, I feel that I've addressed a lot of my concerns in the last round. You guys came through to the zoning revision committee. And so, uh, I'm not sure if it's a place to add it here, but I would just. Echo those concerns, but. I, I'll step back.
Okay.
You're welcome, Melissa, for your appreciation and, and anyone else for that matter. Thank you for, uh, holding this, this workshop. And if there's any further questions, uh, beyond tonight, feel free to reach out to us.
All right, Kirk, thanks a lot. And of course, you know, Judy is our point person there, so we'll get it to her and she'll pass it on to you.
Thank you.
We have Serena, what, what, raise your hand.
Hi.
Be Kirk, I don't know. She might want Kirk.
Oh, no, I just was curious if, um, if everyone on the, um, planning board has read version one.
Yes.
Has everyone read it? From beginning to end?
I have.
Anyone else? No, okay. I highly recommend, because you learn a lot from it. I did, I spent, it took many hours over a couple of weeks. And then, um, as the housing committee, we kind of, there's a, you learn a lot from it and then it makes you think. And then we had comments and questions and maybe tweaking this, or how does that relate? So sometimes when I listen to you guys' planning board meetings or other meetings, I kind, it, it makes me think a little bit more on how we can make it better with. And, and learn in workshops and things like that on how that applies in real life, kind of. Anyway, I recommend it.
Okay.
Thanks, Serena.
I'll be quiet.
All right, well, it's a work in progress. So we know it's, uh, an important thing to sort out. We need affordable housing. So we'll keep working on it and we'll, we'll keep, keep going. All right, so if anybody's done with that, uh, we have to move on to, we have another issue, which is the map of the water aquifer protection and revision of law. And I guess, Melissa, the idea is we are going to okay the map is of what's.
No, not yet. I just wanted to introduce the information. And I may be jumping ahead of where I should be, I don't know. But what I wanted you to know is the process that we've gone through. As you all know, that in nineteen ninety-four, Horsley and Witten mapped the area that immediately surrounds the wells that support the town water system. And much more recently than that, Steve Winkley evaluated the aquifers to look at places that we might put additional wells if we needed them. And he drafted, and what was incorporated into the town law was a map, which I, you can see if you need, if you want to. But the town law said that the edges of the map followed the edges of parcels and the map as it was drawn did not do that. So I was asked to revise that map so it followed the outlines. And then I got into conversations with Laura Ritchie and through them, I believe the board, town board was involved on whether marginal areas that just had a little bit should be included. And whether areas that were just on the other side should be included. We did a draft, we sent it to Ulster County. They recommended that not only what we were outlining, but also some areas that are flooded in what is commonly called a one hundred year flood, which is actually what they call a one percent probability flood. Be included.
Not anymore.
And I can show you what we sent to the county. And I have done a draft of what would be included with the mu- with the flood. The town board has not decided on this yet. What we have at the moment is a draft of the law with one paragraph added. That talks about the flood areas. I mean, the original law is in effect, but there's one paragraph added that has to do with flooding. And the map is quite a bit larger than the first one was, partly just by adding the full parcels that were intersected in the previous map. But I have all of that, I can put it on share screen and show you what it looks like, if you want me to, if you want to take the time. We're not really being asked for an opinion yet, but I'm sure we will be.
Right, well, I mean, Judy, I guess the question is, uh, what input would the planning board have in deciding that?
If we had a special use permit, we would need to look at what kinds of things were permitted based on something being in this water supply overlay protection district. And that is already law. So we wouldn't kind of have to do that, but it will be a larger area if they expand the, the boundaries.
No, but I, I mean, what, what part would the planning board have in approving or deciding what the map is going to look like?
I don't know that formally we have any. I've been asked to work with Steve and Laura and Bennett, I think, was in that group. Just to look at what we were talking about. So I, I may actually be exceeding my mandate, mandate a little bit here, but I thought it would be useful for people to know that this was in the works.
Okay, Stuart?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Judy, for letting us know that. I think it's good to know what's going on, but I, my own view is we should stay in our lane, uh, let the other powers that be actually negotiate the revision of the map. And since Judy's on that, that's fine, you know, but, um, I think it's beyond our role.
I agree. We just have to apply when we do things that are within it, but the actual map itself is town board. Anybody else have a comment on that? No? Okay, uh, if not, we can move on to unfinished business. We have to make a motion, which Stuart did before, or maybe I should have Stuart make the motion regarding a draft resolution for network building and consulting.
Well, actually, I think, I think we moved to close the public hearing and I think we, did we approve the application already, subject to the, um.
Draft resolution.
So now I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, resolution on, uh, the application by network building and consulting on behalf of Crown Castle and Selco partnership for Oz and Wireless. For an eligible facilities request under SPR twenty-two. Oh, boy, is that oh three two two H and SUP twenty-two dash oh three six one H, um, as drafted.
Second. On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that all I?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Okay, I'll take it over from here, Peter. I have to beg you guys.
Okay.
We need to schedule, we need to schedule, uh, the second site visit for Woodsy Mac for the timber harvest to meet with the neighbors. And I need bodies, Connor. Unfortunately, James and Brian aren't on tonight, but I will send an email. I got next to no responses on my emails to try to schedule this. So I'm tonight committing whoever will tell me they will go to one of two Saturdays, October twenty-second or the twenty-ninth. And you're going to tell me what time you're available, so I can set it up, the owners, the forester, the neighbors, and whatever planning board members I can get there.
Okay, I just want a quick point out about this is that, um, don't expect the planning board members to go there to get incredibly involved in the logging operation or. Technical parts of it. I just really want people to get the idea of what it looks like at the end of that lane. Uh, it shouldn't take you more than twenty minutes to just walk around and just see, get in a feeling of what the neighbors are expressing their concern about. I don't want to get into the technical details of logging and harvesting and trucking, but just to go down that lane. And get an idea of what you feel about it, so when we make restrictions on the logging operation, we all know what we're talking about.
Can it be done from a car?
Yeah, you can drive right down and, and see. It's just quite driving down Eastern Lane and getting an idea of what forty, I think it was twenty, logging trucks coming out.
I mean, I'm willing to come, but I can't walk very far.
No, you can, you don't have to get out of the car. It's just get the idea of what this community at the end of Eastern Lane is like. Because quite honestly, all the other logging permits we've done, really the, the staging areas weren't near anybody's houses. Uh, they were kind of removed. We just did at Xena Woods was beautiful staging area that, you know, there was nothing near it. But this is different. And, um, it's just, if the, planning board members would just get a feeling for what that looks like down there, so when it comes before us. We, we know better what we're looking at, that's all.
Peter, my preference would just be to allow me to just do it during the week. I'm glad they're right up there, but the, it's hard for me to do on a weekend, uh, this fall, so. Yeah, um, I'm just. I, I actually just started a new job and at my other job now I'm working weekends, so it's. That's kind of, uh, that's. that's kind of, uh, that's tough for me to during the week is a little better.
John?
I'll, I'll go.
We have two other members of the board not here tonight, maybe they're going. I certainly.
I can go too. Maybe John and I can take one car.
All right, so my people that will go, um, are you okay with October twenty-second or the twenty-ninth, which is better for you?
Either one's good for me.
Judy? John?
I'm looking.
Thank you.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. John? The both of them Saturday.
The twenty-ninth is better, but I can do the other one too.
Brian could, could be, I, you know, Brian might go, I don't know.
He, he told me the twenty-ninth was, no, maybe that was my missile, whatever.
Yeah.
John?
Why, why necessarily? I'm sorry, I missed something. Why only twenty-second, twenty-ninth?
Because I'm trying to schedule the neighbors, the applicant, and the forester. Because everybody wants to meet.
Well, I have the same problem that Judy has.
I know.
Ability, I mean, a similar problem, but uh, not if we can drive. My only issue is that on the twenty-second, there's the opera and I'd like to go, but it's not something I can, that I can't miss.
So this is it. I'm Peter. You know I expect you to be there. So I'm going to do the twenty-ninth at ten AM. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay. Twenty-ninth, ten AM, Judy, you're not missing your opera. I will send the email out and hopefully we'll have the other board members too. I will notify the neighbors. This is just the time that they can all be there. Any other planning board members, if you go to take a ride, send me any feedback. I will share that with the neighbors. Um, so we can reopen the public hearing and move forward.
Okay.
John, we can either drive together or not, as you prefer. Twenty-ninth at um, ten AM. Ten AM, I got it. Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to walk anywhere. You could just literally drive down and see what, what the issue is.
Thank you.
So we can make restrictions when we do the application. All right, that's great. Thanks, everybody. So the last um, thing we need to say is a thanks to everybody who played a part in getting the Xena Woods CEA approved, because it's approved. And we actually did it. And I'm really proud of everybody who went to bat for that. That's one more step of protecting our town.
You're here.
Great job. So anybody else have any other questions or entertain a motion for a drone?
I just have one comment. It's just my own personal uh, event. I'm getting very tired of Zoom. My whole life is like looking at a computer and I'm wondering if we can get back to in-person hearings.
Stuart, I think soon.
I miss all you guys.
Well, Stuart, soon. Um, we have a meeting next week because this is workshop, so next meet, next week we have a meeting. I'm holding that Zoom. We are a state of emergency for whatever, but I think after that, we're going to go back to in-person.
Is there any concern about that from members of the board?
No, no.
I mean, I, I, I have a, I, everyone's getting it is still my thing, but I mean, we'll see.
I don't want to get it and I haven't yet.
I'm trying to stick to what the governor says. They did it, they did not extend.
Yeah, you have to go back. You have to go back.
Yeah, they did not extend our ability. I am right now doing this because there is a state of emergency because of polio and I'm following that, but we do have to go back, as John said.
The other, the other thing I wanted to throw out just to, for everybody to consider is whether it might be wise to bring on some um, alternate members of the planning board so that we can start building in new blood to the experience base. Because we're gathering all kinds of accumulative knowledge, but you know, if, if some of us drop out, then it's going to be big holes. And it doesn't mean that they would have to be able to vote unless, you know, we're shorthand or something like that, but it might be a good vehicle for uh, for us as a board. Just think about it.
While we're, while we're talking about this too, um, the town board has been doing hybrid meetings. Now, we all loved Ashley and Ashley was like a big help and she's not here anymore. So I know there was some issues with the sound last that I knew. But that would allow for me to have Judy and John not come in because I consider extenuating circumstances. I, but we have to like make the play, the town board put out a resolution, but I haven't, I don't have any clarity on like what the expectations are. And I'm going from reading the governor. So any help from any of you to figure out what we're supposed to do? John and I have talked. I just want to keep you all safe. Um, and I'm just trying to do as I read and see.
Okay.
All right, so next meeting I will do Zoom. It's just sketch plan reviews. We don't have any public hearings. But the following one looks like we will be in person. There is, I have a feeling they're just generic, the, but uh, the state is holding two webinars. Of course, like the fifth or sixth, I think of October, which I will watch on foils and open meetings and see if there's any more insight. Uh, the last insight I had was that if we were under a state of emergency, that trumps everything. We're allowed to do Zoom, but then they cut the executive order, so I, I don't know.
No, because I, I ran into Connor two weeks ago in town. I said, whoa, that looks like Connor Wick, you know, it's like I don't see people anymore, except, you know, on Zooms.
Well, Stuart, I want you back. And yes, I think it's common, okay?
Yeah, my, my understanding is that the state legislature is working on uh, a legislative change. Uh, I think it's taking them lo- I think the hope had been that whatever legislation was going to be read uh, that was going to be passed was going to be passed before the emergency order ended. I don't think they've gotten together on everything. But anyway, that's something that's in the pipeline. I don't have any insights into where it's going, but there will be more coming from the state legislature on that in the future.
All right, speaking of pipelines, uh, there will be a point in the far, in the near future when uh, the great room won't be available to us due to construction.
Probably end up back at the community.
Do you want to pitch a tent?
A tent will work, yeah.
Probably back at the community center.
All right, everybody.
They give us our big screen and wifi.
Here we go again.
We can use the Shakespearean uh, stage out there.
The whole world's a stage, anyway.
That'll be January.
Move to adjourn.
All right.
Guys.
Move to adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, everybody.
Have a good one, everyone.
See you next week, six thirty.
And Melissa?
Yes.
Are you going to be in the office tomorrow?
On and off. What time, do you know?
I, I, I'm taking the day off. I'm pouring concrete tomorrow, so.
Oh, all right, morning. I have a chiropractor appointment in Kingston at one and then I'm coming back, so.
Okay.
I'll be here at like eight, so if you could do the morning, that'd be great.
I'll give you a shout.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, Melissa.
All right.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.